Hello and welcome everyone to Yamhill County Truth Seeker. Today's special guest is County Commissioner Lindsey Bershauer. Welcome Lindsey and thank you for joining me.
Thanks Todd, thanks for having me.
Not long ago, you became the Board Chair. How have your responsibilities changed now that you're in that role?
Well, I was elected by my peers as the Chair last year as well. So Yamhill County is a little bit unique in the way that we do that. We don't have a seat that is elected as the Chair where you stay the Chair for the full four years. We have a nomination process where we choose among the three of us who's going to fill that role and who's going to be Vice Chair. So last year I served as the Chair and then because, because things were so strange over the past two years with COVID and shutdowns and we really didn't go back to in-person meetings until last, the end of last March. Commissioner Sterrett thought, you know, I really would like to see you be the Chair in a, in a normal year. So I am continuing to serve that role this year.
Does, does that role differ quite a bit from those who are not the Chair? Or is it just you're the one who sits in that seat and runs the meeting from the agenda?
It's really not that different. I do run the agenda. You know, my name is on all the contracts, that kind of thing. But for the most part, we have a very equal, equal opportunity commission, right? So my colleagues can put whatever they want on the agenda. Doesn't need to be approved by me. We discuss anything we want to. So other than perhaps, you know, leading speeches or attending certain meetings, there's really nothing different. We have liaison departments. So we split up the county departments into liaison roles. And so we play a sort of a dominant role in those specific departments. But even with that, we have really encouraged commissioners to reach out directly whenever they have a question or concern. You know, we're not the gatekeepers to, to our departments. So it's really the best of both worlds.
So related, again, we're kind of being nuts and bolts right at the beginning here. But are, what are your, of your liaison oversight areas that are specific to you? Which ones do you find to be the most, getting most involved in?
Well, I have the same, for the most part, I have the same departments that I did last year. So public safety is a big one. Our sheriff, the Sheriff's Department is the largest part of our, our budget. So it's, it's a big task to be the liaison and sort of the, the deliver, deliver messages from, from that department. I also had the Fair Board last year, which was really exciting because I haven't been able to participate in the fair before in such an intimate way behind the scenes. So that was really neat to see how that, how that operates. The Clerk's Department. So I think I have most of the elected officials actually. So our clerk and county assessor as well. And so just interacting with them and seeing how they run their, their departments. It's, you know, you really learn a lot. It's kind of a, it's kind of like drinking from a fire hose at first. There's a lot of information and it takes some time to get to know these folks and see how they run their departments and help them with certain things that they need help with. So those are my main areas.
For sure. And as I said, when I, when I talked with Mary Sterrett, it's just a daunting position. There are so many huge areas to oversee. It's, it's good though, that you have folks that you can trust that are the employees that take the lion's share of their, their departments. So you have a new County Commissioner, Kit Johnston. How's it going on with him so far? Are you guys getting along and is he different from Casey Kula?
Very different. You know philosophically very different. Commissioner Kula was a, what I would characterize as a leftist progressive activist. So you know, when you sit on a Board of Commissioners with two conservatives, there's a, there's a lot of contention over some of the bigger topics. You know, a lot of disagreement. Unfortunately, that seems to make the headlines of the paper over some, most of the things which we do agree on. And so, and it was a very litigious past two years. So a very different feel. It feels much more positive, like we can focus now on doing positive, you know, forward thinking, things for the county, make some significant changes that I think need to occur. And so Commissioner Johnston's doing great. He has really just jumped right in. Everybody loves him and he's making it a priority to go to every city and attend all of their city council meetings to get to know, you know, what's going on in the cities. So he's, he's all in. So it's really nice to, nice to see that.
Good for him. So now we'll dive into the less nuts and bolts and more what's going on in politics and government. I noticed that Mayor Drabkin was recently in meetings with Governor Tina Kotek and Senator Jeff Merkley when they came to town. I didn't see any mention of any County Commissioners. Were you guys invited or chose not to attend or?
When Governor Kotek was running for office and kind of subsequently elected, she announced that she was going to do this county wide, so with 36 counties, she was going to go to every county and do a tour before she takes office. The notice for that was very, very late in coming. And you know, I would say my staff, my top staff didn't even know when she was going to be here. It was sort of last minute. So there wasn't really any formal invitation. You know, that's regretful because we are, obviously we, we interact with the state quite a bit and are sort of the gatekeepers to what is, what comes here and all sorts of programs, right? And so it would have been nice to talk to her about some of the things that we're facing, but unfortunately we didn't get that, that opportunity. Senator Merkley did specifically invite Commissioners and we happened to be in AOC meetings. So Association Oregon Counties is a statewide group. Most counties belong to it. I think 35 of the 36 belong to it. And we essentially watch the legislature. So all of us get together on Fridays and Mondays and, and watch the legislature, watch the bills that are going on in there and just make sure that, you know, if something comes down that's affecting counties that we know about it and we can weigh in. So we were tied up in those meetings, but otherwise Senator Merkley did, did open that invitation to us.
Well, that's awesome to know that you are monitoring what's happening in Salem through those other means, like I've heard one of them referred to as a war room, I guess, where they, where they see things that might be significant to conservatives, for instance. So most of us in this county, I would hope are at least a little bit attentive to maximizing the development of our economy in Yamhill County. And, and I would say there's a lot of approaches to improving our economy that are not necessarily wise or beneficial. They might be more of a bloated government approach. And you recently ended a contract with SEDCOR. So just to get started, if you could tell me generally what SEDCOR was? And then I'll have a couple more questions related to that. So this is just defining.
So SEDCOR is a, it's kind of a regional group that tackles economic development, but primarily the traded sector. So back in 2017, 2018, when the county, before my time, when the county Commissioners were discussing how we wanted to do economic development, they put together an RFP, they put together some parameters of what they wanted to see and SEDCOR responded to the RFP. And the Commissioners at that time felt that that was a good investment, right? To, to have economic development dollars go specifically to traded sector efforts.
Can I interrupt? What is traded sector?
So manufacturing, you know, some of the folks that are not retail type, not, you know, not restaurants, not retail, but more of the traded sector, the manufacturing.
Got it.
Larger companies, they tend to be larger, but not necessarily. So that was really their focus. That's where they feel that they do, do best to expand businesses, to retain what's here, to help them figure out how to navigate Oregon's land use laws and, and tax policy, regulatory policy. So it's, it's quite complicated, but at the time, that's, that's what the Board felt was the best use of our, of our dollars. And so we signed a contract and it was, it was extended several times.
But it didn't work out. So what was the, it sounded, well, I'll just let you explain.
Yeah, so you know, it's not that they didn't do good work, but it was a very expensive contract. We were spending about $3,000 a week on that contract. And there's different things that go into that, but in general, you know, because of the nature of business, businesses don't always want to reveal what they're doing. You know, if they're, if they're looking at expanding or investing in something, they don't always want to reveal what they're doing. And so there was an element of separation, I think, between the county and SEDCOR. And while we felt, we understood why that was necessary to, for those businesses, at least to be involved, it also didn't feel very comfortable to be able to not tell our taxpayers, you know, this is where $3,000 a week is going. We don't really know. We're helping business A, B, C, D, and E. We don't, we can't name who those businesses are, you know? There was just a, there was an element of lack of transparency. And when you have to be accountable for the dollars, that's, that's a difficult one to get around. The other thing is that in the past two years with COVID and the shutdowns, we had just, we had our Main Street businesses in crisis. I mean, they didn't know what to do. They were told to shut down. Many of them were, were being forced into business closures and there was really kind of a panic. And we realized that we didn't have anybody at the county that could be that interface. We didn't have that this person is our go-to. They know everything about this. Go see this person, they will, they will help you from the county. And so that's something that has come forward and really has been kind of part of the back and forth with SEDCOR over the past two years. And they were just very honest, you know? We don't, we don't do Main Street business, we do traded sector. So at the end of this discussion, the Board felt like we wanted somebody who could do both. We want to be able to be responsive to businesses in Yamhill and Sheridan and Willamina and Newburgh, right? And not just be so focused on, you know, businesses who frankly are large enough to know what's going on. They know what grant programs are. They have grant writers they can afford to hire. They have government relations people, right? But we have all these other small businesses that are not being supported, at least in our, in our view. So we want somebody who is in-house that we can see on a, and call up on a daily basis and is really the face of, of the county in terms of economic development. When the trail, Yamhill's West Sider Trail was kind of foreclosed upon, we, the tourism, quote unquote, Tourism Committee that was put together to help support that effort disbanded. And so I really think that we need to have, in addition to this, this individual, we need to have a group of people that represent every city in the county, that represent tourism, that represent, you know, our traded sector. All of these, these pieces need to come together because it's not just about what we can control. You know, we can't control tax policy out of the state. We can try, but we, we really don't have much control over that. You know, land use issues are a big deal when it comes to industrial, available industrial land. And so we need to have, you know, every voice at the table coming together rather than just these, the folks who already know, you know? And that's kind of how it felt that it was going, so.
So how's it looking for developing a new crew of people? Is it just in its infancy?
Well, we discussed last Thursday, you know, the goals, the mission, the values of the County Commissioners, what we want to see. So that is almost fully baked. And then that will accompany an RFP for this, this individual. So we hope to have that out in public by the end of the month and we will be hopefully hiring somebody amazing. I'm hoping it's somebody local, you know, that, that understands Oregon and certainly understands Yamhill County.
For sure. So in the paper, you know, you have to read between the lines a little bit. It looked like County Administrator Ken Huffer was just trying to be a support person, not necessarily in conflict with you in any way. Just are, is he still on board with you? Are you collaborating effectively with him?
On the SEDCOR issue, yeah.
On just County, now that SEDCOR is done and we're moving on, is he involved in that? Or is it really, okay?
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's the one that's tasked with putting together the, the RFP and making sure that we do everything we need to do to stand up basically an economic development department, so.
You know, it's fascinating to me, the, the elected officials interface with so many folks who are hired and employees of the county. Just where the, your role starts and their role stops or, and vice versa. Maybe I'll, I'll have Ken Huffer on sometime and just ask him how it is from his point of view. Different topic. And maybe it's just me, but frequently, and maybe it's because of the kinds of things that you and Mary Sterrett have brought up that makes it to the paper. But I struggle frequently where I see there's a conflict between the United States Constitution and including the Second Amendment and then things that are, Oregon is mandating. And I feel like you as Commissioners have, are kind of feeling a similarity in, in a conflict, like when the state is trying to do something that seems unconstitutional, you are, you are maybe seeing the Constitution as a higher law than the state. And do you see, does that an accurate description of how it is from your point of view? And well, I'll just stop with that and see, see what you say.
Yeah, we've had several issues that have come forward in the past couple of years where we feel that these laws or mandates that come out of these emergency declarations are unconstitutional. They violate the underlying constitutional rights of every person who lives here. And so, you know, one of those was the, the vaccine mandate, the masking, you know, masking rules, all of these things. I mean, the first year in office in 2021 felt like it was just this barrage of pushback. Every week we were pushing back and pushing back and pushing back. And you know, now in hindsight, you can see how important that is. But it was, it was such an odd, odd experience and odd time to go through. You know, if you think back and think that we all just accepted that we were going to stay home for two weeks, it's just kind of crazy. But you know, we've seen it come forward with the, the Second Amendment as well. We have, you know, state law and these laws that are coming forward via ballot measure that haven't been fully vetted, that haven't been challenged in terms of their constitutionality. And we, we feel that our role is to simply, you know, literally put a, put a line and a fence around Yamhill County and say, we are going to fight to protect your rights as long as we're here. And so, yeah.
Well, I appreciate that.
And I have been, we've, we've been very focused on that.
But it's tough because you're constantly getting beat up about it by certain individuals. Does, does the sheriff, is he kind of on, on, on board with that as well? I know he's an elected official. He swears to uphold the Constitution. Is he kind of similar? Or is he staying out of it?
He has stated that he absolutely supports the Second Amendment. He doesn't support necessarily infringement on that. He has said in public meetings that, you know, you don't mess with Yamhill County's guns, right? We are a pro 2A county. But I think he has to balance his role and, you know, we certainly challenge him. We, we're kind of more in the position of being policymakers, but he actually has to implement it. And so he's often kind of, you know, stuck in the middle. We have some sheriffs in the state who have just said, I'm not, I'm not doing that. I'm not going to enforce that. I don't agree with it and I have discretion. And that's really what it comes down to. And that's why we've had these arguments over our Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance is the sheriff has this discretion. They are not forced by penalty to, to enforce these laws. And so, you know, our, our standpoint has been, we would like our sheriff to exercise that discretion and choose not to, because we feel it's unconstitutional to, um, certain, some of these laws that are coming down regarding the Second Amendment.
Very good and I appreciate it. Keep it up. Related to COVID, what is your, maybe you don't have any sense, but I'm just going to ask it anyway because it's another thing that bothers me is in the paper, you see stories about the hospitals are at capacity due to lots of people having COVID and other, like RSV or what it was. And I get the feeling that it's not, that's not the reason, that it's because of COVID reduced staffing and they have less capacity to deal with any patients that, than before COVID. Do you, do you, do you study those stats at all? Do you have a feel for that?
Well, we have. It is, it's very complicated. It's not just, not just about COVID. It is about how you stated about the staffing issues. I mean, we have, we will have an incredibly, almost crisis level shortage in healthcare in the next decade. So that is absolutely a thing. Now, it doesn't help when you mandate the COVID vaccine and undermine the religious and medical freedom of, of everyone who works in that field. My sister happens to be one of them. That doesn't help. And so I think, I hope to see that some of these policies are reversed. Maybe that will, that will help with that situation. But it's all sorts of things. I mean, when you, when you isolate and you lock yourself down and away from a normal activity, human activity, or you mask, right? For over a year, obviously there's going to be impact to your health. And I think we're seeing some of that come out, especially with our kids who were isolated and now they're suddenly back in school and now they're all sick. You know, so there's some of that happening. Commissioner Sterrett really has got her finger on the, on the pulse of all this, being the liaison to HHS. So she, she's the one who looks at all of these stats and everything. But it really isn't, it really isn't one problem. It's a, it's a whole host of problems. You know, there were, there were numbers that were being thrown around during COVID that we had to question and try and, and pressure the OHA to come out with something that was more transparent and we just weren't getting answers. So it's, it's tough to know. But I, I think that the, the staffing issue is a huge problem, huge problem. And we're seeing that elsewhere as well, not just in healthcare.
Well, thank you for addressing that. Back to the News Register, they frequently seem to hail back to one moment in time, maybe pretty early on when you were joining the Commissioners, as a person who verbally mistreated a county employee. And somehow that's how they always portray you, like they come back to that story.
Yeah.
How, how do you see that? I mean, is that who you really are? Someone who just makes people feel bad?
No. You know, I, I've had this question multiple times and, okay. I, the way that I describe it is that when I was running for office, the Yamhill's West Sider Trail problem, the issue came forward in kind of a fury. It was not something that I was running on to begin with. And it just came out of the, the woodwork and it was this huge problem. And I was elected to fix it and, and not by a small margin. And so, you know, when you start to get into office, and first of all, I was elected in May of 2020, there were about six months in between that time and January when I was sworn in. And when you watch people in county government scramble to sort of make this project inevitable and undermine really what the voters have stated, that they want this fixed. It's very frustrating. And then once I was in office, realized that it's, it's worse than I thought. You know, that's my job. My job is to hold people accountable. And when you start peeling back the layers of this project and you realize how, you know, over a million dollars were wasted on this bridge that's not even done. Or countless attorney fees and, and years of litigation with the farmers on something that was really quite questionable, if not illegal, in terms of its land use allowance. You know, at some point you just have to say enough's enough and we have to be able to do our jobs. It, it's not pleasant walking into something like that when you're a newly elected person. But that was the position I was in and I saw what was right and what was wrong. And the way that our farmers were being treated was wrong. And so I held people accountable as best that I could. We chose to end the trail. It's foreclosed upon. We withdrew the land use application. But there's a lot of residual from that. You know, one of the things that Commissioner Sterrett pointed out was that staff had been working on that for so long that it almost became like it was their job. And so, you know, now when it just stops and you hit a brick wall, there's this feeling of, oh my gosh, what do I, you know, what happens now? So I understood that. I understood those feelings. But at the end of the day, you know, we have to be good stewards of taxpayer money. And it's not comfortable to be the person who has to walk in the room and, and say enough. But that's the position I was in, so.
Understood. I just, I just feel bad that it keeps coming up, even though it, it was, it's long, kind of feels like it's long behind us. In fact, I've got last Friday's News Register here and it's, it comes up again. And I can understand you. It says Board Removes Elected Officials From New Harassment Policy. And of course that makes it look like you can harass anybody, but all the employees can't. That's kind of how the headline reads. It's, that's the way newspaper business sometimes goes, gets your attention. But I just kind of wish that we could get past it and, and just be a little, get along a little better.
Well, you know, it's worse than that. The News Register watches or attends our meetings, so they know what we talk about. And they have done this countless times where they leave out a very critical part of the story. And the critical part of that story is that we are not employees. County Commissioners are not employees. We're not subject to employee policy. So you can, you can put County Commissioners in there. You could put, you know, the, the county canine in there and it wouldn't matter. It's lip service, it doesn't apply to us. So what we did talk about is coming back with a, started out as an elected official code of conduct. I'm just going to make it a Commissioner Code of Conduct and, and have it specific to the three of us. And it's going to address all of those things. You know, how the harassment, sexual harassment, discrimination policies that we espouse. And beyond that, you know, how we handle our expense accounts? How we have, we're going to have transparency around that. Every time we come up for budget meetings every year, that will be public knowledge versus how it has been, which is very siloed. And you know, I don't know how much Commissioner Sterrett is expensing or how much Commissioner Kula expensed. So there's a lot of things that have, we've been sort of viewing and learning over the past couple of years, some good governance policies that I would like to wrap into this Commissioner Code of Conduct piece. So that's coming. That is sort of my answer to that because we aren't employees. We don't, we're not subject to those policies. So that didn't make the paper, of course.
Of course. I, I still go back to, and I might cut this question out, but I'm just kind of curious because it's a, it was, it seems like it was based on a tone. Like if you took a tone with somebody, and I mean, if we get passionate about a topic, sometimes we're going to sound a certain way. It's not that we hate this person, it's that we're kind of tired of hitting our head against a wall is kind of what I'm thinking it was like for you. And you wanted certain things to stop. And eventually they did stop by your, the work you did and on the, on the trail. And it was, is that, is the tone, are you not going to address that necessarily in your new Commissioner's behavior policy, as it were? Just being, being kind and gentle or is that even important?
Well, I, you know, I wasn't elected to be kind and gentle or even to make friends. That's not, that's not this job. This job is to oversee the county and the county's budget, which is funded entirely by taxpayers. So that's my job. You know, I, I've been a part of meetings where Commissioners are yelling at each other. I've been a part of meetings where Commissioner Sterrett is, is, you know, very pointed in, in the way that she asks for information or addresses someone. We all have our own different styles. And at that point, it was a very emotional time. Sure. I have, I felt like the farmers were being completely mistreated and I felt like I was being lied to. And so of course there's going to be elevated tone in that interaction. I've had people come up to me who want to remain anonymous, who are part of the county and have admitted that the farmers were mistreated through that process. So you know, it's one of those things where it doesn't happen very often. You know, we don't have these sort of massive policy decisions that are very heated. But that one happened to be and it happened to be, you know, right after I took office because it was a because it was a problem that not needed to be dealt with. So it's unfortunate that they continue to bring it up, but again, there were a lot of moneyed interests and special interests that wanted this trail, the Yamhill's West Sider Trail. And they don't like hearing no for an answer. They're used to government getting its way. Government is sort of this, you know, all powerful behemoth that, you know, eventually they're going to get their way, right? Government serves government, according to our Senator Boquist. And so, you know, you have a lot of people who just could not accept that it was, that it was done and that there was accountability there. That doesn't surprise me, but it certainly, it it certainly makes sense when you fast forward and you see that, you know, harassment, a harassment complaint was filed and then a recall happened and then another recall happened, right? It's sort of this process of, we didn't get what we wanted and we're going to try and and go after this commissioner.
Which feels like harassment in and of itself. I mean, what they did to you over and over, the recall efforts, et cetera.
Part of the process, right? Voters have have that right to recall. But I stood by my decision and by the thoughts that I had around that and I would make the same ones again.
And the voters stood by you, including me. So I passionate, passionate exchanges happen. Problem is, and even for me, people take it personally and and when you, when you can separate yourself, that's just a lesson. Maybe I'll talk to somebody who's more philosophical about that in the future. So last general question, if if any, I'm a fan of small government, less intrusion. I want, I want to keep holding the News Register, one specific reporter and their, their editorial staff accountable. Are there any topics right now that you think need to be mentioned or addressed that would be of interest to the citizens?
Well, the one that I've gotten a few questions on this week has been the the code of conduct that's, that's going to come forward. We're actually in a process of reviewing all of our policies, so procurement policy and all of them, harassment, sexual harassment, discrimination, all of them. And so that's why that one came up last week, but I talked about our plan there. The economic development position is going to be a big deal. So that should be coming out at the end of the month and then we will see who who applies and who might be the next sort of face of that, that job in the county. We have a budget, our budget meetings start in May, so that's a big deal. That's kind of a yearly process where we go through and really talk about the priorities, the financial priorities of the county. The SASSO is another one. So as you know, we passed a Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance and it was challenged by the AG. We feel we were targeted. Our county and Hardy County were both targeted by the AG. And unfortunately, we had a judge in the county who basically declared it null and void. And so in this process, we have talked about, okay, well, what's our most, what's the most important thing? Is it chasing this up the legal chain and appeal? Or is it actually having a Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance that protects people? And it's obviously the latter. And so we are, we've been working on a, a second version, learning some of the things that the AG, from what the AG said in their, in their filing and making it better and stronger. And so I believe that is coming up this week. And so we're going to debate that and and make sure that it looks good and we'll be passing another one of those.
Good for you. I hope it works out. It's really hard. There's, there are judges across the country that stop things that seem obvious. They just say, they throw it out, dismiss them. It's super frustrating.
Well, it's really fascinating to watch because Senate Bill five five four was not the reason, but one of the reasons why we did pass the SASSO in the first place. And now you have Measure one fourteen, that's going through the, the legal the judicial process. And for some of the same reasons, you know, that's that we challenged Senate Bill five five four and passed the ordinance. That one's being challenged and it's actually seeing a bit more success. So it's, it's just interesting to watch how these make their way through different systems. But I'm hopeful that Measure one fourteen will be, will be declared unconstitutional. But in the meantime, you know, our, our focus is making sure that our folks are are protected against some of these egregious laws. And thankfully, we have a sheriff that doesn't prioritize these types of things, that these questionable laws. But it, it matters that leadership in the county is staying strong and saying we don't support that. That's not good for our, our folks here, so. Yeah, other than that, we have a busy year with collective bargaining. It should be interesting to see how that goes. Usually quite contentious, so you might see that come up in the paper. Yeah, we're doing some, doing some good things. We have obviously, the fentanyl crisis is coming to the forefront. And so we're working on ways that the county can be present and address some of those concerns through our Health and Human Services Department in other ways.
Big topics. Well, I really, really appreciate what all three of you do.
Thank you.
It's amazing. I send you my prayers and I support you. Thank you, Commissioner Bershaw, for taking your time out and for joining me on today's episode of Truth Seeker, and I wish you well.
Thank you, town. Appreciate it.